We are going to start the June, I'm sorry, the August meeting of the Rockport Planning Board, August 5th. And all members are present except for Denise Donnelly, who did inform me several days ago that she would not be attending the meeting. So even though we're down to four members and we only have three members here, we do still have a quorum so we can conduct Planning Board business. The first item on the agenda is a public comment period. This is for members of the public who want to comment on anything related to planning or any matter that's on the agenda. There's a public comment period both at the beginning and toward the end of the meeting, so take your pick. In fact, you can comment both in the first one and the last one if you really want to, but don't say the same thing in both. So Eric, you want to step up to the microphone? We have these nice chairs now and you can talk into the mic and you're being recorded. We're on 1623 Studio.
First, a question. Often with agenda items, I'd like to speak on an agenda item, but should it not wait until you get to the agenda item so that it kind of dovetails with your conversation?
No, which one is it?
It's on 31 Pools Lane. Because you'll be discussing it and I wanted the opportunity to...
Do you know what we have? We have a letter from the ZBA.
Yep.
And we will be discussing it. Why don't you tell us what your thoughts are now?
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
With the whistle, I guess. Yeah, my name is Eric Hutchins. I'm at 45 Pools Lane. I am a direct butter to this property, though my property is a really strange shape. My house is actually, oh, almost half a mile away from where this is going to take place. Some of you might live closer to it than I am, but I am an official butter. And I did speak up at the Board of Appeals meeting last week when they opened their hearing and some of the comments that I'm going to make are along the same lines, but it's, you know, as I'm reading more into this. So anyway, I have about three basic issues I'd like to raise.
Let me ask you, how long you think this is going to go?
Oh, I'll make it fast. It'll be less than five minutes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not going to go on for 20 minutes unless you have questions, but...
No.
So the couple of points that I wanted to make, basically a traffic and congestion and the wetland variance issues that are associated with what they're requesting to the Board of Appeals. First of all, I'm not in support of this and I want to explain to the Planning Board why.
Well, meaning you're in opposition.
Opposition, yes. Pools Lane, as you know, is a dead end and it leads to one of the only commercial establishments in Rockport of that nature. It's not a shop. It's four different businesses in the same building. The dead end component that leads to their businesses, I believe, is well over 500 feet. So it already, you know, that when you think of the subdivision regulations that we work within Rockport, you have to have a cul-de-sac at the end of 500 feet to even put three houses. We have four businesses here already and if you look at the plan, which you have in the packet, sections of the driveway road that would even lead to this, I believe, are as thin as 15 feet. And much of the entrance to this area, which I know because I've lived there for six years and lived close by for 20, it's often trafficked up from delivery trucks, box trucks, ballgames, unfortunately drop-offs, also to the youth center. The youth center got built with this as their access as well, so there's often children around here. I've had numerous times, at least a few, where I literally could not drive home because my small truck could not make it through. Actually had to ask people to get back in their car and move it. If you look at the lines of sight at the corner of the building, I'm convinced that a fire truck could not even make the turn within the actual footprint of the driveway. It's very thin. So there's a lot of traffic and congestion issues that currently exist. I'm not looking to change that other than just deal with it. But to expand by 7,000 square feet of structure down here and the number of additional trips that would come only compounds an issue that already exists. I have probably the single most threatened house in the town of Rockport, if not Gloucester combined, for safety. A fire truck has got to get through this congested area to reach my house, 1,500 feet in the woods where there is no municipal water or fire suppression. I didn't build it, I just moved there. So I didn't create the situation, but it exists. Any addition to that certainly will put my family's safety, it'll decrease it without a doubt due to the traffic there. I won't go into the traffic issue anymore. You can look at the plans. I assume you folks will do a site visit at some point or know the area.
Well, let me just interrupt you. You know, we're not, this has been sent to the ZBA.
Yep.
The applicant came here first and this is actually, we're going to be doing this from now on, is if there's a special permit or a variance that's required, they don't come here first anymore. It's silly. They go to the ZBA with those applications because if they're denied, then there's no site plan review. So why come here first with site plan review? So we're not doing site plan review on this project unless and until the ZBA decides that it's going to grant some of the relief requesting. If they deny the relief, you won't need to come here again.
Right. No, I understand.
Just make sure you understand.
Yep. No, no, I do inside and out.
Okay.
I was at your last meeting when you discussed it with them and it's good for other people to know as well. The other issue that is very germane to the site is watershed protection. The variances are particularly important. Town meeting, almost unanimously, along with all boards and committees, DPW, Planning Board, CONCOM, Board of Health, voted to support numerous times over the past 15 years provisions that protect the well field and the watershed protection overlay district. There's already a business there to expand this into those zones of influence for our drinking water supply. I just personally and professionally cannot support that. All of the stormwater drainage from the site will actually run to the south into a wetland resource area, which is actually in the Zone 1 of the town's well field. And the wetlands in this area are a signature of the groundwater. So anything that may come off the site actually is potentially absorbed into the pumping of the well field at any time it may pump in the future. There may not be, by definition, something of contamination there, but we will never know what's actually stored in storage units. The other is if there's ever a fire, all bets would be off at that point because there'd be all kinds of contamination. It would all run into the Zone 1 of the well field. So those are the salient points that I would like to portray to the Planning Board and that I would like to suggest that the Planning Board does not support variances at this location. As far as I know, in 25 years, there's never been a request for this level of variance and special permit in association with the protection measures in the Planning Board's zoning by law to protect our municipal water supply. And I don't drink the water, so it doesn't even help me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, any other public comments? Toby.
Toby Arsenean 95 Granite Street. I've not wet my pants, but I'm sodden wet, so I won't sit in the beautiful chair.
You can move that microphone anywhere you want, if you're comfortable.
Can you hear?
I can hear.
You can?
I can, yes.
Oh, that's good. That's good. The debacle at the last selectmen's meeting, not to say anything about the particulars of it, would all have...
Why don't you bend the microphone down a little bit because...
It will fade.
You're fading, yeah. That's better.
Yes, did you get...
The debacle at the last selectmen's meeting.
Right, right. It will turn out to have a silver lining and you can profit from it. It will turn out to be a good thing. It's a very rare thing that you're invited to a board of selectmen's meeting or take the initiative to, you know, ask to go there. It should happen more often. I think you should be meeting with them at least three times a year for your benefit for theirs. You invited them when you had the information from the Commonwealth on the changes in 48, the zoning act. And your board, I gather, approved of what the state did. I think it's an outrage, both the particulars of what they've done and the fact that they proposed to meddle in local zoning, which ought to be our affair, although they provide the legal groundwork for it. At any rate, no one came to hear your presentation, so all for naught, and you were insulted and offended, and rightly so. And now you have another chance to rub their noses in it, and I hope you will avail yourself of the opportunity and do so. But that's not all. You know, that pretends to be an attempt at affordable housing. It's no such thing. It's an attempt at housing, which is not the same animal at all. But whatever it is, the town has a commitment towards affordable housing, or at least in theory. People give it lip service if nothing more, as long as it's not about to happen in your backyard. At any rate, the state has latched onto the fabulous sum of $40 billion of the taxpayers' money out of Washington. And if I remember, the state's budget is something on the order of $36 billion, so that's a lot of money. It's probably the one time in our lifetimes when, you know, there'll be such a pot of gold sitting there waiting to be robbed. And you can be sure that all of the greedy and hopeful people with good causes or what they imagine to be good causes, reparations and such, will be there clamoring to get their paws on as much of it as possible. And we, you know, ought to be clamoring too. If you have any serious hope of doing anything for affordable housing, we're never going to be able to raise the necessary funds. Even if everyone in town felt it was the most important thing in the world, there just isn't the money and there isn't going to be the money. So there is this huge pot of money and you need to get into the act. And if you're simply the Planning Board doing it, or even their majesties, the selectmen doing it, it's fairly hopeless. It's like me lecturing the Board of Selectmen. You have perhaps an ear, but nothing more. No standing and certainly no leverage. But if you can band together with the Mass Municipal Association, supposedly representing the interests of all the cities and towns, and get them to take up, you know, the burden and grind the axes, there might just possibly, like the odds of winning the lottery, be money coming here to do affordable housing. So my suggestion is, aside from rubbing the selectmen's nose in, you know, the changes which you failed to impart to them, that you could take up that too as a cause. I had another cause I think you should take up with the Board of Selectmen as well. Do you want me to go on or have you had enough?
No, you've got another minute, so...
Another minute won't quite do it. But the other cause is the FEMA maps and all of the coastal floodplain is jurisdictional under the Conservation Commission's regulations, although unlike all the other resource areas, there isn't a buffer zone attached to it. But all of their regulations apply in that area, although they haven't got performance standards which would make it, give it teeth. But also, there's a whole section of the zoning code, Roman numeral eight, which is your bailiwick directly, that is based on the coastal floodplain zoning.
Yeah.
And what they've come up with the last time is utter garbage. It's incompetent and I do believe it's dishonest as well. It's done by taking the bathymetry, that's the topography of the seabed, and wave studies. The last time they took one from California, believe it or not, but it's true. And you run that through a computer and you come up with something that produces these maps. It's beyond me. It's alleged to be science. I think it's a science like alchemy or phrenology or astrology. But you could also say it's, you take apples and multiply by pairs and here we have the result in cantaloupes. But they disregard altogether empirical evidence, which is what people have seen, observed in the storms of record, '78 and '91. And there are numbers of people prepared to testify and there's also documentary evidence. And they should be called on the maps. We object to their issuing them and wish to be consulted.
Toby, you want to wrap it up?
I have wrapped it up.
Okay.
So you're supposed to take up the cudgels on this too, also a thankless chore, to go to bat against the FEMA wretches and object, get something in the door so they can't issue the maps.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. We've got three sets of minutes, June 3rd.
We have minutes. Boy, do we have minutes.
We have minutes, yeah. June 3rd, July 1, and July 15.
All right.
Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Any, let's start with June 3rd. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to June 3rd?
Starting with the paragraph, "Grant applications are due tomorrow." Let's properly spell Karen Sonnerborg's name.
What page are we on?
We are, let's see, the first page, no? Let's see, hold on.
Oh, yeah, it's under your, it's an item you spoke with. Okay, yeah, I see that. What's her, how do you spell her name?
Add an R in there, Sonnerborg.
Okay.
N-A-R.
So it's double N-A-R? B-O-R-G, okay.
That's all I have for that meeting.
Tom, you have anything? Zero?
Nothing.
Okay. So as far as the minutes of June 3, 2021, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes subject to the change that Harry has raised?
So moved?
Moved by Tom, seconded by Harry. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried, 3-0. Approved with change. A lot of minutes in for that day. Okay, let's go to the next set of minutes, which is July 1, 2021. Any, I have some, but I'll ask if anybody else does. Additions, corrections, or deletions?
I have some.
Okay, go ahead.
On the second page, item 4, the A and R, toward the bottom, about...
Item 4, under item 4.
Item 4, yep. Let's see, about, fourth line above the motion, it says, "The property owners are also looking for approval to put their trailer..."
Yes, I see that.
I believe what they said is they had approval, already had approval.
Correct.
So just change, "are also looking for," to "had."
Had approval for...
Okay. And then the rest of that sentence is okay.
Okay.
And then, the next item, 5, the fourth line from the bottom, manufacturer, including the manufacturer, I think we said model and manufacturer.
Model and manufacturer?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's what we said.
The lighting fixture?
Yeah.
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 Specifications.
Right.
Just above that?
You have, are you done?
No, I have another...
Let him finish and then...
In member items, the second one, Mika states, and the second line, it says, "Their main focus as a committee is addressing the maintenance of the seawall."
Yeah.
I don't know if I said that was the main focus. I didn't mean to, but you could hedge it a little bit by saying, "One focus as a committee."
A focus as a committee.
One focus.
All right.
That's all I got.
All right. Harry?
Okay. Item number 5, SPR Eric Kelly and Erica Rico. Second line refers to growth floor area when that should be gross floor area.
True, true. It did grow. Okay.
Moving down to number 8, let's refer to the American Rescue Plan Act. In parentheses, ARPA.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, number 8, yeah.
Just before, just before, number 9, public comment.
Okay.
So about six lines up.
ARPA, yeah, I see that. AARP?
Make that American Rescue Plan Act.
You mean actually you want to spell it out?
I would spell it out, yeah. And then in parentheses, ARPA.
Okay.
And then continue it as ARPA, and there on out. And then the last line, "Corsland will reach out to Karen regarding the housing needs assessment and HPP." See where it just says, "Assessment."
I'm sorry, where is that, Harry?
It's the last line of number 8.
The housing needs, okay.
Housing needs assessment and HPP.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. I just have one on this, this particular set of minutes, under 3, SPR continued, 31 Pools Lane. It says, "This work would also occur within the Water Overlay Protection zoning district." It's actually the Water Protection Supply Overlay District, so just to change that. That's it. Okay. So...
One, some more set of minutes?
What?
One more.
One more, but yeah, let's vote on this one. Okay. I need a motion to approve the July 1, 2021 minutes with changes as stated.
Some moved.
Moved by Harry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tom. All in favor? Aye. Motion, minutes approved, 3-0, with changes that we've related to during the meeting. Okay, last one, July 5.
You want me to start with that?
I'm sorry, July 15, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Number 4, item number 4.
This is the SPR, State of Edna Smith.
Must be the top of page 2. Mr. Smith confirms that parking for the new residence will be right in front of the proposed additional home. The permeable paving proposed is a walkway. That's good there. The existing garage will, what? Will fencing on the property, so there's something missing.
Yeah, something's missing, you're correct. It looks like there was a sentence that wasn't completed because fencing on the property is, was a different thought, it looks like, yeah.
So do we need to send that back for retrieval from the recording?
Yeah, we'll have to find out what, what was going on on that one.
Probably can't approve it then.
Well, we, I mean, we can approve it and just go back and change, you know, add whatever was left. It looks like something was left off.
Yeah.
Don't you agree?
Yep.
Well, they just left, you know.
I'm not going to guess what it was.
Yeah, and I, you can't. So, I mean, we don't want to go through this again. So why don't we, I'll send it back, have Mary send it back, and have that retrieved by Kelsey so we can just fill it in. Okay, anything else, Harry?
That's it.
Tom?
On number 5, I have a question. Did the application actually get withdrawn or was it just Mina withdrew her representation?
Um, as far as I know, at this point, the application's withdrawn.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the way it's written and I wasn't sure.
Yeah. The only thing I have is, on this one, is, doesn't make a lot of sense. Item 7, which is about Roy, about the vacancy, it says, "Shaw's found a potential interest in the position, resident named Roy Campana. Mr. Campana has numerous properties in Rockport." I don't think, that's good. We know, I know Roy, he doesn't have numerous properties.
He's a resident of Roy and he owns proud, he owns a residence.
I, I think that's wrong. That's one of those things that I can't guess what was actually said, so we'll have to go back to...
Numerous experiences with...
And other similar municipalities around Massachusetts. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, his job would deal with properties, so he doesn't own them.
Yeah, but he didn't, yeah, he doesn't own them and then, yeah, so I don't know what, I mean, it's not that important, but it is strange. So we've got two, two areas on this that need to be filled in with information that just we can't figure out what it is. Okay, with those changes or those additions that we don't know what they are, but they will be made, does anybody want to vote to approve the minutes of July 15, 2021?
You don't want to see them come back with the additional?
You know, if it was really, I guess if this stuff was really critical, I would say yeah, but most, it's not, so...
Okay. So I'll move then.
Okay. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed with additional language needed. Okay, that's it on the minutes. So let's go to the next item, which is the site plan review, revised application from Kelly and Erica Rico for 11 Wallace Road. And you can sit right there, Ms. Rico. Want to give us a brief rundown of what's changed and why?
I'm Kelly Arico from 11 Wallace Road. So what I've added is the...
David, is her mic on? Is her mic on?
It's on green, but it's...
It's on green, but it might not...
It's not picking up anything.
Nine? Hi, I'm Kelly Arico from 11 Wallace Road.
That's better.
In Rockport. So I added the exact light locations and light specifications to the plan.
Yeah, you also, the other thing you did, which is really important, is what?
Oh, is the gross floor area.
Right.
We are under 7,000 square feet.
Why don't you explain what you did there?
So a couple of things. I did talk to the building commissioner and he said that...
Building inspector, you mean?
Yes, sorry, the building inspector. And he said for gross floor area, basements don't count, but I did count anything that was over seven-foot ceilings in my application. A lot of the basement is crawl space.
So you counted seven-foot ceilings?
And above.
And you came up with, between the proposed building, your garage, which we'll get to, and your gross floor area, you came up with 6,877...
Correct.
Feet, gross, a gross floor area.
Correct.
Which is underneath...
The 7,000.
By just a hair, the 7,000. Because of, and really because of, I remember we had this conversation that you had, you had included the entire basement.
I did.
Which puts you over the 7,000 feet.
Correct. I also counted the over, like the porch.
The exterior.
The exterior porch, which also does not count.
Right.
But it does count for square footed.
Yeah, so, you know, now, unfortunately, I don't know why, but the amendment that was done to the gross floor area at the last, at the last town, town meeting, there was, you know, remember we had that confusion? We revised it, we approved it, it was approved at town meeting, but it's never been posted anywhere.
I put it on the webpage.
You did?
Yeah.
Right, but before that, it wasn't posted.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, you, it's unfair to applicants. So now it's there, which is great, so...
Sorry.
It's okay.
Not your fault. But, okay. Is that all you have to say at this point?
Yes.
Okay. I've got, I've got a couple of questions. Tom, does anybody else have questions?
I see the light fixture and it looks like a complete specification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's my question, Kelly. As you know, you can't have two living spaces on one lot.
Right.
Okay? I'm looking at this plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I know originally, I'm looking at the minutes, you said originally that it was going to be an accessory dwelling unit in one of the earlier, the first time this was on. But then, at the later meeting, the most recent one, you said, "No, it's not going to be an accessory dwelling unit."
It's not going to be a dwelling.
Okay. What, I'm looking at the plan and you've got, what is it going to be?
An office and just like a rec room, studio for working. And really, the, the point of it is, on the second floor there is a great view of the ocean, so we're going to just put a deck just to sit on, but nobody will be living there.
Plumbing. Is there any plumbing?
Yeah, what about bathroom, kitchen, anything like that?
Just the bathroom, no kitchen.
All right. And I'm looking at your rear, do you have your drawings with... And I'm looking at your rear, do you have your drawings with you?
No, I have them, I, I have it on my phone.
We have the map here, you might want to look at it. We have your rear elevate, the front elevation is the garage doors.
Correct.
You've got two windows above, which is essentially a, a small second floor.
Correct.
That's going to be your office space, right? And then in the back, it's rear elevation, you've got the outdoor deck.
Mm-hmm.
You have to say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And then below that, you've got some other doors with lights on either side.
Oh, just for looks, just to get sunlight in, into the garage.
So that's going to be a back entrance to the garage, is that right?
Yeah, it was, it's, I mean, it doesn't even necessarily have to be doors, we were just doing it so it matched up, up above and below and to get any light in there. But it's, it's, the first floor, it's completely garage storage, boat storage, car storage. We're just doing the doors for looks.
How do you get from the garage to the house?
It's not connected to the house.
Well, that's my point.
Correct.
You have a garage.
Yep.
And you have a house.
Mm-hmm.
But how are you going to walk from the garage to the house? If you park your car in the garage, who, is, is going to, whoever's living in number eleven in the house, is that going to be the same people as the ones who are using the garage?
So it'll be us eventually living in unit eleven, in number eleven. It'll be us. And we'll be using the garage to store our boat in, in the winter.
When you say eventually, what is?
Uh, in about, in about four years.
Okay, so.
So the upstairs, we're actually not even going to completely finish at this time. We're just going to build it, do the outside. It's, it's so we can store our boat in for the next few years.
So up to, up to the four years from now, when you may be living there, somebody else is going to be living in the house?
Yes.
Other than you?
Correct.
Is it a single family house?
It's a two family.
Okay, so it's two families, and now you've got the garage, which will be your occupancy or the, or will be one of the two families. Who, I guess who'll be using the garage until you?
Only for the, for our boat storage is what it'll be used for.
So not.
And we have wave runners, so we'll put the wave runners in it in the summer. And we'll use, so number, it's actually also eleven Dean Road. So we're going to be summering in one of those two units.
You have a question, Harry?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to make a comment that probably at the initial hearing, you, you mentioned that the building, the structure was being dimensioned for a boat, as though it were a specific boat.
Correct.
Yeah. So you already have the boat?
We already have the boat.
Okay.
Correct.
And that a smaller building might risk not being able to store the boat inside.
Correct. Because it's over twenty, the, the boat's thirty-two feet. Which we were told you can't store anything more than a twenty-four foot boat outside. So that's why we're building it.
Tom, you have any comments? Questions?
How tall is the boat? That garage door is not very high.
What was that?
The garage door is not very high, does the boat fit in there readily?
Yeah.
I'm not a boat person.
Well, if it doesn't, they have a problem.
Well, yeah.
Correct.
Get a new boat or a new garage.
Exactly.
I'm looking at the elevations.
I think it's a thirteen feet.
And you can, you can estimate that the height of the garage door is about ten feet. Approximately.
So I, I did talk with the building inspector about this. Because of the obvious concern, you know, the, the creep that can happen in these situations, not necessarily with you, but all of a sudden, a space that's being used as a, you know, an office is going to be used as a residence.
That's, that's not our intentions at all.
But the other thing is, it's used as an office, but it's your office and not anybody who's living for the immediate future, anybody who's living in number eleven, it's not their office.
Correct.
So I guess what I'm saying.
But it won't be.
Let me just finish. If it's an accessory use, what's an accessory use? Is a use that's accessory to the number eleven, I'm, in other words, number eleven's being occupied by you and you're being, and you're, it's an accessory to your occupancy, you're using the office.
Right.
This is more like you're, you're, let's say you lived in number eleven. But you rented out the garage space for an office. Would that be okay?
I mean, so, I mean, I guess that's not our intentions ever.
I, I'm, I'm, I know, I'm saying, I'm giving you a hypothetical.
Right.
Because what you're saying is, you're going to, you and your husband are going to use the garage. But the, but at least for a few years, the residence, you're not going to occupy it. So two, two different people, even though you own the residence, you're not going to be occupying it, you're going to be renting it out to other people, but now you're also going to have a boat storage and office and deck that you're going to use, but you have no connection to the occupancy of the, of either one of those dwellings.
So I mean, I guess. So we want to build the, the garage for our, storage of our boat.
I get that.
For this time now, like, this winter. Our, our plan isn't to actually finish the upstairs within the next few years, the outside will be completed. So I, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, for right now, we, we are renting it.
Right.
And we won't always be renting it.
Plans change.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Well, I, I'm going to talk a little more with the building inspector, but I, I am sure that there'll be some notation requested by us that says that specifically that the garage area not be used for, certainly for a residential purpose.
Right.
And depending on what my discussion is with the building inspector, it may also be that maybe some other issues there. But we have a public hearing, you have enough for a public hearing, I think, so. Does anybody want to make a motion? We could schedule this for a public hearing. You don't need any variances or special permits or anything like that.
No setback issues.
No setback issues? So the public hearing would have to be at the earliest, it would be September second, I think would be the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to schedule this for, this Arico application on eleven Wallace Road for a public hearing on September second at, let's say, seven fifteen?
Some move?
I'll second.
Seconded, I'll, I'll be in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we're, this will be scheduled for a public hearing. Call, talk to Mary tomorrow.
Okay.
About what's needed to notify your abutters. We, we will do the notice.
Okay.
But then it's got to be, you have the responsibility of identifying your abutting property owners and then sending it out to them and having proof that you actually did send it to them, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I share your concern about the use, future use of that upstairs on the garage.
Yeah.
It's a hot plate short of a dwelling unit.
Right.
Right.
And I, I have talked to the building inspector about this and he did say that he, you know, the building, when they come for a building permit, that will be one of the conditions also, so. Understood. Ironically, one of the things, one of the changes we're looking at for the zoning is to allow accessory dwelling, you know, it's, we're not there yet, so.
It's already a two family on, on site.
Right, I know, I know. You know, it's like, it just keeps on growing, so. And I, and frankly, I don't know about the issue about having, if she's not living there, she and her husband don't live there, but they want to use the garage for storage.
I think maybe, maybe you eliminate the plumbing and maybe you've got a storage.
Yeah. We'll have to look into that.
It's speculative. Okay.
Okay. So. Next item is the thirty-one Pools Lane, which has already been raised as an issue. We got a request from the, from the ZBA, I think it's part of your packet, July, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This is from Alan Battistelli, chairman of the ZBA. We have received a petition from the OSHA property on Tarz Lane proposing in addition for expansion of their storage facility within groundwater zone two. In order to consider providing relief, our board is required to receive input from certain boards and committees as per bylaw subsection seven B within thirty calendar days. Please provide your recommendation within that time limit. So this was sent to us on July fifteenth, so we have, you know, plenty of time, but we have this. And they're looking for a recommendation. So I'll ask if anybody has any thoughts on, we're, we're familiar with the project, it's been to us, we know what's being proposed, we've heard from one of the abutters today about that. We, we've seen the plans. And what happened was that we said to the own, to the applicant, look, go to get, you know, you've got a bunch of major variances you're going to require here, don't come to site plan review first, you know? Go to the ZBA first. So that's where we are. And they want a recommendation from us.
Which would be a preliminary, we'll still do a site plan if they go through with variances.
We're not committed to anything.
Right.
This is, this is basically part of due process, as far as I'm concerned.
So what does this opinion mean?
This opinion is just, let me, I can look it up in the zoning code.
I'll give you my opinion, but I don't know what it means.
Well, I know you, I'm sure you will. But let me just look up seven.
Seven B and, uh, seven, seven B, yeah, seven. Paragraph seven B under section seven, subsection seven.
Bingo.
Should have done this in the first place.
Will all of you please speak up? It's hard to hear you over that evil roaring noise.
Yeah. Thank you.
That thing?
Let me find seven. Seven B. Start at page thirty-six. Seven, seven B. Okay, this is, this looks like. There we go. Seven is the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. This is, you know, quite lengthy. No, it's got, it's got to be a big, I think it's a big B, Harry? Not a little B.
This, this is a big B, right?
Seven, seven B?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, here it is, I got it. Upon receipt of a special permit application, the zoning board of appeals shall transmit one copy to the Board of Health, Water Commissioner, Conservation Commission, and the Department of Public Works, Watership Protection Commission, and the Planning Board for their written recommendations. Board and departments will have thirty-five calendar days to respond.
Thirty-five.
In writing to comment by said agency. The applicant shall furnish the necessary numbers of copies of the application, so.
So thirty is thirty-five.
It's thirty-five, so he's actually, he actually have five more days, but.
Yeah.
So. If we're going to do a recommendation, it's going to be a compilation of everyone's thoughts on this board, so if you have any thoughts.
Looks quite, quite a stretch to allow this.
Yeah.
And I would note that the DPW commissioners today disapproved.
D, DPW?
Correct.
In the state level?
No.
No, 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 our DPW.
Our DPW.
Oh, oh, DPW, I'm sorry, I'm thinking DEP, DPW, yeah.
And for what reasons?
I think they're concerned about their well. And just a general thing about it's like in the wetlands, so. And.
So is Grant Field.
Yeah.
What's Grant Field?
Baseball field.
Oh, yeah, but.
Different use.
Different use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But partially highlighted by Mr. Hutchins's comments. Traffic primarily.
Right. So.
To me.
What are your thoughts?
To me, traffic isn't the issue that it's made out to be because of its use, its proposed use.
Okay. Well, I mean, you don't, you may have some thoughts of your own, if you do.
I always have thoughts of my own.
Anything else, anything else that you can think of, Tom?
You know, lots up the Conservation Commission and the ZBA, and if I were sitting on those boards, I'd have some issues there.
Yeah.
And that's all well and fine.
Yeah.
And they'll be heard.
I, I have.
You know, I, I just think that we should hear the application, we really haven't heard the application.
Yeah, well, we may never.
And we may, and we may never get to that point.
We never get it, yeah. My concern with this is, you know, it's an environmentally sensitive area, it's in the Water Protection Overlay District, which I'm, you know, I have my issues with this even allowing a special permit in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District as being appropriate at all. But a self-storage unit is basically, let's think of what people do in self-storage units.
I'm afraid to think what they do.
Well, they store whatever.
Whatever.
And we, and you have no control over what gets stored into, in those units. I mean, realistically, I don't care what someone says, you know, someone comes there and they bring in their boat, they bring in their fuel, they bring in their this, they bring in their that. Okay, now you're in a wetland, you have a flood, you have a leakage, you're in a Water Supply Protection Overlay District. And in my view, this is a really inappropriate use for that, for that location. You know, I mean, people can put storage units in a lot of places, I don't have any problem with that, but I do have a problem with someone trying to get permission to have a storage unit in an area that supplies the town's water and also that's a, you know, wetland, a designated wetland area. So I, those are the two things that I would say would, in my view, would make me recommend that this not, that this be disallowed, this application, which I'm assuming is what the ZBA is asking for, they're just, you know, we're just making a recommendation. We don't, we don't have any say, and frankly, if they approve it, if they approve it and it comes to us for site plan review, you know, then we're, we're kind of stuck with it. We can do, we can change some things, but we can't say, we can't say no. It's outside of our jurisdiction, so.
We can't say no to a site plan review?
That, I'm like, no. Basically no. Unless there's some major error like with the Arico application when, you know, when they had originally more than seven thousand feet. But if, if all that's in order and they got their special permit or there's variance, they come to us and they say, okay, now we're here for site plan review, we can't say no. They don't have that authority.
We do ask for revisions.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we can have changes, we can have them do things that are within our, you know, purview under the site plan review law, but deny, flat out denying them? No. Unless, you know, their application isn't complete, or they didn't give us some document they were supposed to give us, or something like that, but on, on the merits, we can't say no. So.
Sounds like we're in limbo.
Well, yeah, except would you recommend, I guess the question. Well, yeah, except, would you recommend, I guess the question is, Harry, would you recommend this?
What I'd be recommending has nothing to do with an approval or denial ultimately, it's whether or not we are obligated to hear it.
Well, that, you know, I, I don't know if that's, I, this is a funny section, granted that, that this, you know, this, and, and, this, under the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, this is part of that. What we're doing here, it's a part that, with the revision that I did, I've eliminated, so we're not in a position like this anymore. Because there's not gonna be any special permit to allow someone to build a, you know, a, a self-storage facility in a, in the town's water supply area, it just isn't, because there shouldn't be. You know, that's, it's just off limits. That's my view, but they have this application, so do we wanna say, "Yeah, we think it's okay, we think we can deal with it on, if it comes back here for site plan review," or do we wanna say, "Look, we hope the zoning board of appeals, we recommend that the zoning board of appeals deny the application." I mean, this, this has to be a board decision, I can't, I can't just say my own opinion. You've got three people here, we're down two, so unless we all three agree, we have no recommendation.
Sure, it could be two to one, we still have a quorum.
Well, we still have a, we don't have a recom, we don't have enough people.
Our thirty-five days would be after the next meeting, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So, well, we have a new member who won't know ups, up from down?
You might have a, a fourth member.
Well, we'll have, we'll have Denise here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, if, if we don't, if we can't go forward with, um...
I recommend we table it.
Table it.
We've got time.
So we'll table it for the nineteenth, we'll still be, um, just barely within the thirty days, but...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah.
You said thirty-five.
I meant thirty, I, I meant thirty-five.
It'd be outside thirty, I think.
Yeah, we'll be, and I'll write Alan and correct him on that, just tell him that we, we're down one member, we're already down two, we're down one member at the meeting, we couldn't have a consensus on a recommendation, but by the way, we have thirty-five days, so I'm assuming that'll put us, um...
From the, from the, from the fifteenth?
Yeah. Let me just make sure. So the fifteenth of July. July has thirty-one days.
I think it's-
Fifteenth of the fifteenth is a, is a Sunday.
It's calendar days, it's not, not business days.
Plus five, yeah, yeah.
It's calendar days, right. So we have a meeting on the nineteenth, and that's when we would have to-
Yeah.
You know, have our recommendation. Okay. So we'll just table it till next meeting. Because we do, we actually, even though we have a quorum, we actually need majority vote of the total, so we'd need three votes to do something here, so we don't have it. Okay. Um... Number five.
Do we need to vote it formally?
Hmm?
Do we need to vote it?
No, I don't think so, we just table it, you know, we'll just, we don't have, we're not taking any action.
Right.
So we just leave it. September nine, I've spoken with Alan Battistelli, we both think having a joint meeting with the, um, ZBA is a good idea, so, um, I mean, obviously, we're waiting for Denise to be here too, but September, it would be September nine, that's a Wednesday that we're, that's a day that we don't have a meeting, it's, I think, the second Wednesday of the, second Thursday of the month, this, of, of the three of us, that's fine with me. I can ask Denise, you know, outside of the meeting.
Fine with me.
Fine with you too?
Okay.
Six-thirty, be okay?
Yeah. What are the rules?
Of the joint meeting?
Is it open to the public?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Be advertised.
Yeah.
Open to the public. Okay.
I usually see these joint meetings as two separate notices of meetings, I don't know if that's like-
Well, we'll give one for ours, they'll give one for theirs, is that what you mean?
That's what I generally see, but theoretically, you could put it on the same-
You could, but I think we can do it separately, and that would be fine.
How long is this gonna be, two hours?
The joint meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, well, if we agree on the ninth, one of the things we're gonna have to do on the, our next planning board meeting is come up with, and the things we wanna talk about with the ZBA.
The other question is, do we meet in person or on Zoom, because I think Board of Appeals is meeting on Zoom.
Okay, well, that is another question, yeah. Yeah. But we'll figure it out. Just wanted to make sure the date was, uh, okay. So, next item, six, discussion selection process for interim planning board member. I know you wanted to talk about that, Tom.
I thought if we had a consensus among ourselves, we could come into the meeting with the Board of Selectmen saying, "Here's the consensus from the planning board." That's what they sort of asked us for at the previous meeting, and we didn't have it, because we hadn't had a chance to meet. So perhaps we should explore that now, but without Denise?
Yeah.
Denise made it clear who she favored.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which was, uh, Peter. And also Roy has withdrawn his application.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, he told me that last, before I went to New York, he said he was withdrawing it, he was letting Debbie Powers know that, so... That makes it relatively easy, I think, um, for-
Shall we do this with a motion?
We can, but let's, let's, let's just say some names. Does everybody here, what's Peter's last name?
Cutner.
Cutner?
K-U-T-T-N-E-R.
Yeah, I think Peter's qualifications are kind of standout, um...
That's how I see it.
Yeah, I mean, that's really all it comes down to for me, he's, he's been on the planning board, he's got, he's an architect, he's, I think, highly qualified to be a planning board member, so, um...
He had mentioned to me when I spoke with him that he, uh, the town of Winchester had had some, um, controversial matters that they had to cover off on, and, uh, so he's, didn't seem to be shy about having to deal with matters like that.
Yeah, no, I think he'll be a good, you know, be a good addition to this board, really, so...
He told me he wanted to attend tonight, but he was traveling, so, there's-
Well, he had good intentions.
Yes.
Um, you wanna make a motion, make a motion.
Uh, I move that the planning board members present support the appointment of Peter Cutner to be the interim planning board member.
To fill the remaining term of Peter Lilia. I'll second-
Herman Lilia.
Herman Lilia.
Amendment.
Not his son, not his son.
I accept your final amendment.
Uh, yeah, he would be pretty young. Um, okay, so there's a motion, a second, um, so if we, if we make this, if we make this by motion today, um, I think, you know, I, I have, Denise has expressed to me her belief that Peter Cutner is the most qualified person.
And she expressed it to the Board of Selectmen, too?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, we know what, what's gonna happen there, so I would say that, see, it's hard to know how the, how the Board of Selectmen's gonna like set this thing up now, are they gonna want us to individually vote? We talked about this after the meeting, when it was kind of a, a little bit of a fiasco.
They did talk about numbers, yeah.
So I guess with a motion, you know, that's like as a body, but if it's individually, it would just be you, me, and Harry each individually voting.
We can report to them what the vote is here.
Anyway, the motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so there'll be a motion, just, um, we made a motion to support Peter Cutner for the interim, interim planning board member for the balance of Herman Lilia's term, and, um, we'll just play it by year when we come to-
Which is next Tuesday.
Yeah, when we come to that meeting, so...
And by the way, I'll be away.
I hear.
No proxy voting.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be out of country.
But now, at least, we can say-
In Maine.
It's good, oh, good. The water not warm enough, not cold enough here for you, you gotta go up there? Okay.
It's on Zoom, you can, uh, connect.
Well, I don't think you'll be thinking about that.
Where I will be?
No.
All right.
Unplugged.
So, but we can report to the Board of Selectmen that we did have a vote, and that you were one of the three who voted to support Mr. Cutner. Okay, next item, liaison, Finance Committee, Sal DiStefano, now that he kinda knows how we work a little bit, uh, this, is this your first meeting, Sal, with, um, come on over here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Sal DiStefano, forty-three High Street, happy to be here.
Happy to have you.
Yes.
We've never had a liaison, I think, from the Finance Committee, how did that come about?
Well, um, I recently joined, and, um, there were some, um, assignments, um, given out, looking at the background of, of members, and with a desire to, um, uh, to communicate with other, with other boards, uh, in town, and, um, I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of Gloucester, um, so I'm in the Community Development Department, so while I'm not a planner, I interact with planning on a daily basis, and, uh, prior to that, I worked for the Boston Redevelopment Authority, formerly, um, now known as, uh, BPDA, um, and for ten years under Mayor Menino, and then, uh, Mayor Walsh, uh, in charge of the industrial districts under the Backstreets Program, so, uh, within the city of Boston, um, I interacted with, uh, different planning departments, neighborhood groups, um, through work, and then informally, um, through community work in, uh, East Boston, uh, before I moved to, uh, Rockport in two thousand and fourteen, so, um, Chairman Dwight Valentine thought that, uh, this might be, you know, a, a good group to liaise with, and, uh, as, as a resident, with, uh, my wife and I have two small kids that we hope can grow up in Rockport, stay here, live here, raise a family, you know, we have a vested interest, um, to do whatever we can to help.
Excellent. Um, do you, how many meetings of ours do you envision attending?
So, um, you know, I hope to attend as, as many as possible, I, I also run, help run Rockport Youth Soccer, so during the soccer season, um, sometimes it can be challenging, but however, um, um, you know, via our friends at sixteen-twenty-three Studios, it's easy to catch up on, on meetings that I can't, that I cannot attend in person, and, um, you know, during the pandemic, the use of Zoom was helpful, uh, um, for people who have other obligations, especially when you have kids that are ten and twelve and need to be supervised at night, uh, it was easy to get on on Zoom and, and listen in, so I hope to, uh, I, I hope to attend often, and I look forward to attending and being of whatever help, um, I can, um, in any way, uh, that you see fit.
Well, that's really, I mean, you sound highly qualified, great to have you as a liaison, um, and hopefully you'll find the board what we do, what we're doing now, which are some pretty big things, I don't know if you're aware of that, we're, we're, um, looking at, um, rezoning a significant portion of the town around the, um, the train station to accommodate affordable housing, and that's really comes, that mandate comes from the, from the governor's office down, so to alleviate some of the shortage of affordable housing in, you know, this area, there really isn't much. So that's gonna be interesting when that comes out, because, yeah, as you know as well as I do, that a lot of people are in favor of that in, in terms of theoretically, but when it actually becomes a reality, it's maybe not as attractive to them, so we'll see, we'll see how that goes.
I'm in the final year of my, uh, Master in Public Administration program at Villanova University, and, um, we have a unique opportunity to, uh, because it's the online program, to interact with colleagues from around the country, and Rockport's challenges unfortunately are not unique, it feels like, uh, uh, most communities are facing similar challenges, you know, how do, how do you create housing, you know, for, for those who, who need it? How do you help people age in place that are current residents? How, how do you, um, you know, family, family sizes are, are changing, they're, they're smaller, and there's increasing single-parent households, and, and how do you accommodate that, and, and, um, you know, so, um, I, I just look forward to interacting and being of help, and, and just listening, and making sure that, um, there's two-way communication whenever possible.
Wonderful, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a liaison, much appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, um, next item, eight, review of revised site plan review application.
Except for page two.
Right, what I realized was that, um...
We got most.
Mary was, was, left page two of the revised application out of our printed ones, so it goes from one of four to three of four, four of four, and, um, let me just talk about what, why I thought this might be a good idea to revise this thing, and, first one is that the, the application for site plan review, nobody knows when this was drafted.
Or who drafted it.
Or who drafted it, or how, or maybe it was changed multiple times, but it's, um, it, it became obvious when you start to really read this, that it's, it's a lot of stuff that we don't need to have in the application, um, and I'll be happy to talk about any of those if we want, I mean, for example, is the property identified on any of the following maps for value or protection? The National Heritage and Endangered Species Map? Well, I haven't heard of that one. Rockport Open Space Planning Map with a question mark after it on the application, meaning whoever wrote that down didn't even trust their own memory, um, so, so much of this information, the, these lines are things that can be gleaned from the actual site plan. You know, you look at the site plan, you wanna know how many feet are on a front, on a road, well, look at the site plan, that should tell you that. And then the other thing that's really confusing about this thing is the, um... Oh, yeah, they have a Watership Protection Overlay District, yeah, that's, again, that's something that's on the zoning map that you can readily see. They have, um, gross floor area and lot coverage, gross floor area and lot coverage square feet, or S-F. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but gross floor area, the way it's defined, is not the same thing as square footage, so it's confusing, because you've got two different ways of measuring things, and only one applies. So what I did was, and, you know, if anybody wants to really read through, I don't think anybody's read through this, I have to say I haven't read through the existing application, but when I started- I have to say I haven't read through the existing application, but when I started to read through it, to ask an applicant to determine estimated traffic flow on the street adjacent to the site, AM and PM and peak, I mean, when do we ever do that? For a site plan review?
When we would have a big, uh, development.
Right, but that would be covered by the, um,
Major.
By the, the sheet that, for major construction projects.
Major site plan.
Yeah, the major construction, we have minor and major, and the reason we broke it down was because the criteria for one are far more involved than the criteria for a minor. Water, sewage disposal, grading, blasting, all these things that, uh, may be relevant, but, uh,
Maybe you should have major and minor site plans.
Well, okay, this is what I did. And, you know, this is a work in progress, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, I just didn't do this and say, okay, guys, vote on it. First thing I did was, um, tell people who want to apply for site plan where to look for the information that they're gonna need to supply to us. Which I don't think a lot of people know. And page one is the introduction. Page two, which says, read section ten in its entirety. Page, the second item is type of site plan, we have the minor construction project and major construction project for which the fees are specified as being different. Project location, where is the project located? Granted, the way it's laid out on this page is not the way it's gonna be on the final. Uh, gross floor area, okay, what I did here is I actually put in, plugged in the definition of gross floor area, so somebody, you wanna know what gross floor area is? Here's the definition, and then put your numbers below that. After that, uh, well, let me go backwards, cause I, I need to, I need to tell you what's on, does everyone have page two on their screen or otherwise?
Yeah.
Cause I've got page two here. So, page two starts with what's the zoning where you are. Consult the official's town zoning map for this information. And underneath that is the name of the owner, and again, we want some specificity with the owner's name, so we have, if the owner's an individual, put that name down, if the owner's owns the property jointly with somebody else, put both names down, if the owner is a corporation, partnership, or limited liability company, then put those names down. And then, you know, the owner's address. Owner's representative, this would be the owner, someone comes, uh, you know, who's a lawyer, architect, engineer, who appears on behalf of the owner. So then we get down after that to the gross floor area. And then importantly, approval from other boards and, or agencies. And this is something we've seen, we've come up against a few times already. And I've talked with Alan Battistelli about this. He recognizes that this is the appropriate way to do it. If you need an approval from the ZBA for conservation commission or some other body, go there first. Get that approval, whatever you need from them, then come back for your site plan review. If, assuming your project is still existing. And then the next item on page three is other permits or approvals you may require, why don't you list what those are? And finally, uh, on page four, site plan review submissions. We have required submissions and the site plan contents are listed in section ten, five through six of the zoning bylaw. And then, um, I also put in there the lighting bylaw, which everyone misses. Cause no one knows it's there. And so if you have lighting, you need to submit a lighting plan. And that's it. So, if you have any other thoughts, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna do anything with this tonight, I don't think, cause it's premature, but if you have any other recommendations that you think should be in there, um, let's put them in, you know? Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I like the existing version that has tables.
That has what?
Tables.
Tables, okay. Frankly, I couldn't do a table, so I didn't do a table.
Oh, it's a technology limitation.
Yeah, I just didn't, you know, I could do that, not a problem.
Take the ruler out and just process it.
Let's keep it to gross floor area. And let's not get confusing by saying square footage, because, you know, we wanna, we wanna be consistent. Cause you do deduct, you don't deduct certain things when you're calculating gross, gross floor area, that someone might deduct if they're calculating just square footage.
So this document is intended to be a tool, we've had a tool, tool's kinda dulled now, time to sharpen up the tool.
Yeah, plus our, plus our
Make it relevant.
Site plan review bylaw has changed since this application was done. I don't know what, you know, what version of the site plan review law, um, bylaw was existent when the, this application, this, the current, current one was drafted, I don't know what they had, what they, what their law said.
Yeah, so.
I mean, this could be twenty-five years old as far as we're know, as far as I know. Anyway, take a look at it.
Just, my only comment, I, I think that the definition is, is appropriate, but every time there's an edit to that definition, it's going to have to be reflected in this document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Tom, you have any comments? You like the table, you like the tables.
It's the engineer in them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. That's okay.
Yeah, I, I confess to that.
That's gonna just mean someone else has to, I was gonna give it to Debbie Powers to finalize anyway, because, you know, I just, it's beyond my
There are certain things in the old version that trigger a site plan review, like the grading. If we have no mention of grading in the new application, can we say the application's incomplete, cause he didn't put it there?
Well, if they're applying for site plan review, they've obviously know that they're, they need site plan review. You're talking about triggering site plan review, that they know they, if they're submitting an application, they know they need it. So I don't quite understand what you're saying.
Well, what if they, or, what if they know they need a site plan review for some other reason?
Right.
Plus they have a grading thing that would have triggered it. And we wouldn't know about that, cause it's not in the new application.
Well, but if you look at the, um, the, the site plan checklist.
Yeah.
Which applies to major construction.
Okay.
I don't think they have to do grading for minor construction.
Okay.
Right, so what?
You know, it's right there.
What about the thought of adding an appendix? I mean, it may not be needed in every, there's gotta be a checklist.
With a house, they're gonna build a house, a five thousand square foot, a five thousand square foot house or whatever. They may need site plan review, but you say they need a, you say grading, like a grading plan?
Well, if they move so many cubic yards, that we need to know about.
Okay, well, that's, that's one of the criteria, yeah.
That's an example, and there may be
No, I, I understand, I, I'm just.
I'm, I'm afraid that somebody fills out an application, it looks complete, cause they filled out every box, and yet, it doesn't have some of the information we needed for some projects.
Okay.
And can we say the application's incomplete? They'll say, I fill, I filled out all your blocks.
So, uh, well, okay, well, what do you think we should add then, I'm, I'm looking for, you know,
Input, this is, I mean, this is, this is a form in progress.
Right, exactly.
So.
So it's not, if you think we should ask for a question about that? Is that what you think?
It's not gonna apply to most SPRs, but some. And how do we find out about it, would the, well, do they have to present plans that have that then? It'll be on the plan.
When you say, you mean the actual, like, topography lines on the, on the?
No, it says, the old version says the amount of grading, cubic yards.
Okay, but where is that in the, if you look in the site plan review law, they can ask whatever they want on the application, I'm, I'm, I'm going off what we have in our law. So, we have major construction and minor construction, and in, in minor construction, we have land removal or land filling, subject to section twelve of the zoning bylaw and the SRAA zoning district, site plan review is required if land removal or land filling disturbs twenty thousand square feet or more. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that kinda thing.
Yeah, well, it's, it's there. So if they read this, right, I mean, do you wanna ask specifically, are you gonna move more than twenty thousand square feet of land?
I just don't know how somebody reading the bylaw and then seeing this application knows that they need to, and there's extra information that they need to give us. How many cubic yards are you moving? Not in this application.
Right, okay. Well, I, I need more than that, though.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, in other words, if you have a specific suggestion for language that you think should go on the application, then let's.
That was kind of a general comment, that's one thing I picked up, and there, there may be others of that nature that.
Well, take a look at it and we'll talk about it more on the nineteenth. But let's get it, you know, I think this is really important we get this done, because this application that we're working with now is, is, it's no good. And, um, we need to revise it.
Yeah, I, I suspect they, they overdid it because they wanted to make sure that they had all the information and they could say if it's, if you have it in here, it's complete.
Well, you know, the only thing is, Tom, is that you can ask for information till now that the cows come home, but if it isn't relevant to site plan review? Who cares?
No, no, I'm.
You know, I mean, like, it's gotta be relevant to what we are looking at when we look at site plan review, just think of that.
I agree, I agree, that's all. That's my example of the cubic yards move.
Yeah.
Should be relevant.
That would be relevant.
Okay. I hope it's not the only relevant thing, but, okay.
Okay. I, I would say that probably a lot of people who fill this thing out now have never read the site plan bylaw. So they're just going off the application, and they're not even looking at the bylaw. Okay. That'll be for this nineteenth. But if you have any comments, please have them ready at that point. Okay, member items, number nine. Any member items?
I have one at least. Uh, since our last meeting, the Long Beach Options Committee has met.
I, I was wondering if this is picking us up.
Are we being picked up?
That's good.
I hear myself a bit.
Now I can hear you.
Okay, sorry.
I can.
You cannot?
I cannot.
You can't hear me now?
I can hear you now.
How about me?
Yes.
We will eat the microphones. Okay, so, since our last meeting of the planning board, there have been two meetings of the Long Beach Options Committee, which were the second and third in the sequence. So at the, at the, uh, second meeting, which was the first one after our last meeting, uh, the main focus was on the decision tree. We presented the draft decision tree, which included decisions about things like whether or not to rebuild the seawall and whether or not to renew the leases, that sort of thing. And it was well received, recognized that it will be added to as it goes on, and we don't have enough information to make any of the decisions now, and it's gonna all be sort of all encompassing, we need a lot of information to make many of the decisions, they can't be marched through linearly, we know that. So I think that meeting was a, a good way to get people oriented as to the structure of what we need to do. And the most, the third meeting in the sequence, the second one since our last meeting here, was this morning. And the focus there was twofold, one was to, um, have everyone comment on the so-called Long Beach Facts and Considerations Report from twenty thirteen, which it turns out was prepared by the old town administrator, the previous town administrator.
Linda Sanders?
Linda Sanders, although the, the report has no names or anything on it. I, I dug through a lot of minutes and found it was the administrator's office that issued it. And so, some of us read that, some of us didn't, it's a rather lengthy report, and it had some good information. Uh, we found it lacking in two aspects, one was that the financial information was not current. Needs to be updated, both in terms of, uh, revenue and expense. So that's, one of our action items is to get those updates, I think Paul Murphy is working that through the, uh, selectmen and, uh, I don't know if he's going to finance committee, Loreen wasn't at the meeting. But, uh, through the, uh, town administrator and other sources, so we'll be getting some of that information. And the other was to give us, uh, the members the opportunity to present our thoughts, and there were several opinions about, um, you know, the, uh, liabilities of doing this and not doing that, and, uh, the, uh, the nostalgia for having, uh, the cottages continue as they have been for generations. I, uh, made a PowerPoint presentation of the alternate plan, which was not in the, uh, town administrator's original list of options, and I called it managed retreat. And it's about how you can accommodate going forward, the gradual, increasing threat of not just rising sea level, but increasing storm surge. And that is a way to kind of progressively back out of there, according to how much flood threat is at specific areas of the, of the beach. And it reduces the revenue gradually, so it's not like we totally cut off whatever two million dollar kind of amount we think we're getting out of there. It will be a way to sort of wean ourselves off of that and be able to return it to being a, uh, more, uh, economically, uh, ecologically sound, uh, area, which it has really become a, kind of a horror show.
What happens to the houses?
The houses will need to, uh, according to the lease, be removed as the lease is gone, and it was noted that some tenants may choose to abandon their house, and then it's up to the town to figure out a way to remove it.
Hmm.
One way is to wait for the next big storm and it's gone. That's not the best way, but it may turn out to be a way. So anyhow, that's, that's, I think, a new option that had not been on the agenda, and, uh, it got pretty good reception.
Interesting. Okay, thank you, Tom. Harry, you have any?
Nothing for me.
Uh, all I have is a letter, which I sent you a copy of, to Mary, July thirty, two thousand twenty-one, from Catherine Hamilton, Mass, Mass DEP Drinking Water Program, Boston. Ms., um, Catherine Hamilton is someone I've been in touch with for little months when I was redoing the, um, the really confusing, contradictory, and actually not all that great for protection, uh, existing water supply protection overlay district. And I redrafted the entire district. I eliminated any of the district other than what seemed to be, what was the intent, was the zone A, which is the surface water supply, zone one, which were the wells themselves and the area around them, and zone two, which was the area that, um, that affected, around the wells, that affected the wells, which was determined by pumping the wells and seeing how much drawdown there was from surrounding groundwater. Those are the areas. Those are the areas that the DEP cares about. That's, those are the only areas the DEP cares about. And so, that is, those are the areas that were included in the version of the water supply protection overlay district that I redrafted, which has been approved as drafted by the DEP. So that's one portion of the, at some point when we end up at town meeting, this will be one portion of the zoning changes that will be before the voters. And I think it, it makes, it gives us rock solid protection of our water supply areas. There are no special permits, there are no variances. If you're in a water supply protection overlay district, you just don't do certain things, period. And what was really crazy was that most of the, almost all of the water supply protection overlay district is in the SRAA zoning area, the most strict zoning in the town, that the water supply protection overlay district regulations that are bylaws that were done for the town of Rockport actually allowed uses in the double A zoning district that the double A zoning prohibited, which was crazy. And I pointed that out to a few people who were involved with this original, which is what's on the books now, and they were kind of scratching their heads, because I don't think anybody ever compared the two. So, anyway, long story short, we got the DEP's blessing, that's a huge thing, and hopefully we'll move forward from there. That's all I have.
Moving forward means taking to town meeting?
Meaning going, you know, ultimately going to town meeting, revising the town zoning map to change the district and to be consistent throughout.
Would you like to put a copy of that proposed version on our webpage?
Of what?
The new verbiage for the-
I don't think so, I don't think yet, I don't think so.
Okay.
Not yet, it's too early. People won't read it anyway. Except for Toby, he might read it.
Not unless it's a hard copy.
Hard copy, okay. Okay, so, anybody else?
Anybody else is not here?
Member item. Nope, okay, well, that's it. Couple of comments. Mr. Arsenio, you want to sit over there?
No.
Your bottom is probably dry by now.
No, I'm still all wet.
Okay.
And I'm not Mr. Arsenio, I'm Toby Arsenian. That was a barbarity of Monty Hitler there. Anyway, mention was made, the site plan review, you know, the references, other things that would be required, and you point them at the, at the lighting bylaw, and indeed you should because it's not part of the zoning and they might not be otherwise aware of it. And when you do that, I can't help but remind you that the planning board did a third of what they promised to do. Hank is no longer here to boast of what you accomplished, which is well worth doing, but two thirds of it remains undone, the part that would deal with commercial uses and the part that would deal with municipal uses. So it's, you know, a bit of a bum steer and a false promise. And it's easy for me to, you know, complain endlessly, but that remains to be done. I got no response on my suggestions about what you might take to the Board of Selectmen, you know, at your-
For what?
A presentation, again, on, on the zoning changes, you know, the 40A zoning changes, and my suggestion that you get in there pitching to latch on to some of the pot of gold, the 40 billion. Is there any response on either of those?
No, you know, I mean, we heard what you said, and-
But you're, you know, if you don't make some sort of a decision as a board, then you go back to them the next time when you anoint the candidate, and, you know, nothing will come of it.
No, we're, we're working on it.
So, those wouldn't, wouldn't be items, I think you ought to ask the Board of Selectmen to add those as, you know, to the agenda for something that, that your board might discuss along with them. And I do feel that the candidates, the remaining ones, should have been here this evening. You know, it's not formally a requirement that people who apply to serve on town committee, I've made the pitch for years, but it's not, that you attend two meetings, but, you know, indeed you ought to. I mean, there'd be circumstances in which it's not possible, but, you know, if you can't make the effort, then, you know, it speaks poorly for you. And also, it's your chance, you know, your chance as a board to know whether you actually want, you know, this person or not. And the public's chance, you know, to see what you're getting before it's foisted upon you. So, I, you know, I fault them on that. I don't know. What Tom said about the Options Committee, I was there today, if being on the Zoom call is qualifies as being there, and I made my pitch of, you know, what I believe is, you know, the appropriate option for the town, and I got no response. I trust at some point I will get a response. And the proper option for the town, I'll say it here, you know, people want the beach. I don't care about the beach, but many people care greatly, so we want continued access to the beach. And the money is important. I disagree with Tom on that. What he's proposing is ideal. We don't live in an ideal world, the money-
Toby, let me just interrupt you for one second. Tom was reporting on what he was doing on another board to us.
Yep.
You're now talking to us about what Tom, or what his board did.
Right.
You know, you've got about another minute, do you really want to use it, talking about that? Which really isn't our board at all, it's a different board.
Well, I would say that if you're interested in planning and the public having a say in the matter, I'll shift my ground and say, they're now saying, the Options Committee, that they're going to come up with recommendations. That isn't part of the charge, but it's a reasonable enough proposal. It's idle to make recommendations unless there's some mechanism for the public to take a hand in it. If the recommendations are made and it still all lies in the hands of the Selectmen, you know, it's, it's window dressing and false promises. There needs to be some explanation about who's going to make the decisions, you know, and what the timeline is, whether that's the Board of Selectmen or a town meeting or some combination of the two. Otherwise, it's false promises.
Thank you. Okay. No other public here to make comments, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:38.
8:38.